I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today with grateful hearts. Thank you for such beautiful weather and thank you for time to, we can gather to do the business of the City of Gaston. Father, I pray for clear minds and clear hearts as we proceed this morning. Be with those that are in the hospital, those that have lost loved ones, Father, during this time. We just ask you to keep us as close as you can, God, to your heart and to keep us to do your will. Father, we pray all this in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. At this time, we'll have Mr. Josh from the EMA to come and give us an update.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Very good, very good. Before we move on to today's report, we had several questions last week, and I wanted to get you guys the answers that you needed. So, Councilman Cannon, in regards to the percentage of Etowah Canyons who have taken the vaccine, 38% of the county has taken at least the first COVID shot. That comes out to 39,056 citizens. As far as Councilman Reed, your question about the flu cases, so far this flu season, we've had 1.32% of flu cases. For comparison purposes, at the same point in 2020, we had 6.00% cases. And then in 2019, we had 8.5%. So, you can see the marked difference there in the numbers. The deaths attributed to the flu in the 2019-2020 flu season were 1,018. So far this year, we've had one death statewide. So, you see a humongous difference between all of the numbers. So, I just wanted to make sure that you guys had that. And then, Councilman Back, I wanted to clarify something that I said last week to you, and it was my own fault. Ms. Gaither says, "I missed my calling. I should have been a physician because my handwriting is terrible." And, but you have to take into consideration, I was a paramedic for nearly 20 years, so, you know, bouncing around in the back of an ambulance, you're not going to have the best handwriting. Nevertheless, the number that I gave out to you in regards to the question, the number of positives, I actually gave you the number of individuals who had been tested instead of those that were positive. So, I just wanted to make sure that the record was clear and it was my fault. Like I said, I couldn't read my own handwriting, but I just wanted to make sure I corrected that record. All right, today's report, total number of cases stands at 13,705. The number of deaths remain 348. Total number of tests that have been administered within the county is 58,194. Schools currently, all three school systems have less than five cases, according to the data for last week. We've got two COVID vaccination clinics that are going to be coming up in the near future. The first of those, and I'm sure Councilman Worthy will probably hit on both of them during his segment of the meeting. Quality of Life is going to be sponsoring a vaccination clinic at Way of the Cross this Thursday. It'll be from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That will be open to anybody, I believe. And then the next one that the EMA, along with the Department of Public Health, is going to be doing together, will be at Carver Community Center on April the 27th. That's one week from today. It'll be 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It will be with the Moderna vaccine, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. As I said, it will be a walk-up clinic, weather permitting. That's the course of least regret. Instead of confining a bunch of folks in a community center, we want to try to have it where it's outside, social distancing, taking into account, and also at the same time, making it where we can try to make it as convenient as possible for people to take advantage of it. There's no appointments that are necessary for this clinic. First come, first served. And we have approximately 200 to 250 vaccines available, and it's open to anybody that is age 16 or older. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Josh, can you tell us how many people, A, that y'all vaccinated last Friday, and did we hit a lot of homeless people while they was there?
No, sir. The clinic Friday was, I guess the best way to put it was disappointing. We only had 21 people take advantage of the free clinic. We had a few that had stopped by thinking that the community center was opening back up and that sort of thing, but we just did not have the turnout that we had anticipated. You know, we had about 250 vaccines that were going to be able to be administered that day, and only 21 took advantage of it.
You was talking about the Way of the Cross. Is this thirsty at the Way of the Cross?
Yes, sir.
Do, is it going to be during lunchtime?
My understanding is that it's from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Be all day.
Okay. There's probably, what, 150, 200 folks come down there every day to eat?
They feed a bunch, yes, sir.
Maybe we can reach some of those down there thirsty.
We're going to be doing, as a matter of fact, probably this afternoon, we're going to be doing some of it. We're going to be doing some promotional flyers in the area to let folks know that there is a couple of clinics coming up that folks can take advantage of.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
You know, Josh, Jerry's Pharmacy probably has an impact on the shots because he's been doing it heavily in Alabama City.
Right.
So, I'm sure that's something to step back on anyway.
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, he administered my daughter's, my daughter's first COVID shot. So, I know he's been doing a wonderful job over there trying to make sure everybody's Anything else?
Okay. Once again, we thank you for coming and giving us an update.
Yes, ma'am.
Good report.
Thank you. Y'all have a blessed day.
We will continue with our agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that was held April the 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of April the 9th through the 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right. Do we have any proclamation? Unfinished business. We have a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 710 South Sixth Street in District 4, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days on March the 16th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 405 South 12th Street in District...
San Dushka.
I was taken aback by the picture. The Exchange Bank of Alabama, subject to write-off foreclosure of 13th Place, has been the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is that where?
13th Place.
13th Place. Did it fire, was it out? It was burned, okay. What is the pleasure of the council? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Harbison.
Oh, that's right. I was ready to dispose of it already.
That's fine, just feel free to do that anytime. I am Brian Harbison. We filed this case two weeks after it burned last October. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, just a point of privilege here I want to make, let the public know. This is the 13th Place, the former 13th Place building, which is on 12th Street, over by the old 12th Street Baptist Church there on the corner of Cansler, I think, and 12th. But basically, it was a nonprofit agency. For those of y'all that don't know, that housed underprivileged children in the community and they had two different houses there, one for the females in the community, or one for the females and one for the males. And unfortunately, they weren't able to sustain their funding. The city actually stepped in and tried to help out. I believe several other local agencies stepped in and tried to help out. Ultimately, they did file for, or go into foreclosure on the property. And shortly thereafter, just a couple of months, I think after they vacated the property, the building burned to the ground. So, what we're doing is just tearing down the property, what's left of it, the foundation. That's all I have. With that, I'd move to abate, Madam President.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property at 12 Sandusky Lane in District 6. Charmaine Kaufman, subject to a mortgage in favor of Lori B. Stone being the last known owner. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
I apologize, I wasn't very prepared for this and wasn't sure what to expect. My name is Charmaine Kaufman, I'm the name listed. I sold the property in November of last year, so I was unsure as to why it was still sent to me. It's currently in Patty Farms LLC. They took it over because I was not able to make improvements on the house, and they actually own a construction company to be able to do the improvements needed for the house. So, I'm just trying to make sure that there are a lot of the time needed to be able to do so.
When did they buy this from you?
In November, I believe, sir. And honestly, I haven't even looked at the house because I sold it and I got paid for it and didn't have anything else to do with it since November.
Would you agree this house has been there, like, in this situation for about four years now? How long have you owned it?
I've owned it for, I want to say, a little over two years and have slowly worked on it as I could. Unfortunately, I do have to work a lot of overtime, and that is why I decided that I needed to go ahead and sell the house so somebody could have the opportunity to make the improvements needed. Because when I bought it, it did have some new windows on one side, and it had new vinyl siding. It did need some roofwork. I did have to do some landscaping and did try and keep the yard cut and do what I could as far as keeping it up, but I knew I couldn't do the improvements needed. So, I did sell it at a reasonable time, within the timeline I was given, to be able to sell it and it be taken over.
You'd agree with me that whoever owns the house has had ample time to fix it, right? Especially since you said that was a construction company? What I'm getting at here is, this has been going on for about four years. I've been getting calls. I got a call two weeks ago about it again, the bugs and everything's going into people's houses over there. It's an empty house, people's going inside, and it's, I guess you must have been the one that came and cut all the shrubs and all the bushes down beside North Street there, Morton Street on the side right there. Somebody cut all that, and that's basically all, you know, that we've had seen done on that thing in a while, so.
I knew I'd cut down trees as far as the back. There was a tree laying on the back and kept it cut, cut around the fence line and stuff like that. Kept the yard cut, and I did start taking stuff from inside of the house, just the old carpet and stuff like that. But honestly, every time I would go to cut the grass, other people had taken their garbage and started putting it out in front of the yard. I work third shift at the county. I can't, I can't be there all the time, and that was another reason why I said, "Okay, let me let somebody else take on this project because it's more than what I anticipated." But I did reach out with the building, with the people here, continuously tried to give them my correct address because I do live here in Gaston, but I never did get notification until it was well after the due date, as far as that went, after multiple times of me giving them the correct address and whatnot.
Have you ever pulled a building permit either, did you?
Yes, sir.
You did pull it in your name?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because I was going to work on the porches. That was one of the things, is getting the porches and stuff done. So, I'd actually taken down the railings on the back porch so I could get to the base boards to actually start getting those fixed. And then, at that point in time, I was like, you know, this is going to be a lot, and unfortunately, we're shorthanded, so I'm having to continuously work. I just didn't have the time that was necessary for the projects. I do apologize, I didn't mean anything disrespectful. I honestly did try, and I did want to sell it to somebody that could fix up the house because I did buy it from a friend. It does mean a lot to them, and they do want to see the house brought back to life.
Yes, ma'am. I understand, and I appreciate you coming and telling us about all this, and I don't know if Mr. Harbison's the one that sends the letters out to the owners and stuff. It might not have been recorded at the courthouse.
That's, I just text them right before I came up, and they said that it takes time for the computers to update on the tax website, but in the probate records, it has already been filed and transferred. So, I was wondering as to why they didn't get notification as to this hearing.
Okay. We'll hear from Mr. Harbison when he gets, when Ms. Toles lets him speak. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would you say that you come and talk to us?
Yes, sir.
What was the name you said of the purchaser?
She said that it was labeled as Patty Farms LLC.
Patty Farms?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case on July the 10th of last year. On July the 20th, he did come in and obtain a building permit for the repairs. As you can see in the picture, little or nothing has been done since that permit was obtained. So, there have been no improvements. I'm looking at a title opinion that was dated in September. He is listed as the sole owner on that title opinion. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Harbison, who is the sole owner now of that property? Who was the sole owner, the lady that's here?
Mr. Kaufman.
Okay.
Ma'am Kaufman?
Let me ask the question. If she sold it, can we still do the resolution if it's another owner now? Well, for the sale to be legal, there needs to be something recorded at the courthouse and that be provided to us. The initial letter that was sent out and actually recorded in the probate office states that in the first paragraph, "It's actually unlawful to sell property and fail to notify my office if the property has been condemned."
What is the pleasure of the council?
On the recommendation from the Building Department, he wants us to pass this resolution. I move to pass, please.
We have any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have items 12 through 16 of public hearings for a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens for demolition work that has already been performed. I'm going to call out the information for all five of these, and anyone who wishes to speak may come forward. The first one is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien at 1309 Vincent Avenue in District 1, Clovia R. Johnson and Francis W. Lowry, $2,966.40. The next resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien is at 1316 Chandler Street in District 2. This is FNA NPLLC, Possible Rights of Redemption of the Estate of Leroy McCary and potential heirs listed as Nettie McCary, Elmore, Malcolm McCary, Christine McCary, Tequila McCary, Adriana McCary, Carbin McCary, Malcolm McCary, Antoine McCary, Aleia McCary, Ali McCary, and the State of Alabama, and Wesley Sims, $3,366.40. The next resolution is an assessment of abatement lien at 423 Alabama Avenue in District 3, State of Alabama, with possible rights of redemption by Brenda Giles and Robert V. Diaz, $3,991.40. The next resolution is assessing nuisance abatement lien is at 1107 Hurst Avenue in District 3. This is FNA NPLLC, Possible Right of Redemption of the Estate of Henrietta Mall and Pentecostal Temple, C-O-G-I-C, at $2,441. And then we have, the last resolution is 14, 14 Walden Street in District 5, State of Alabama, Redemption Right of James Lee Moody and wife Mary Lee Moody are heirs if Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Yes. If you'll, if you'll give us, first of all, which one of the properties are you?
1107 Hurst Street.
Okay. That's item 15. If you'll give your name and address, please.
My name is David Alexander, and I'm representing the church, Pentecostal Temple, Church of God in Christ, which is located at 1105 Hurst Street. And in May of 2019, this property was listed for tax redemption, and it was a building on the property. And we had interest in that it had been a, it was resident by the matriarch of the family, and she deceased, but the house was, we thought was occupied by someone. And when it came up for sale, we thought to acquire it and maybe renovate it and use it as a parsonage or house for the church changing house or whatever. And we acquired it, paid the taxes on it in May of 2019. Then in September of 2019, the building was demolished. Shortly after that, there was a bill that came to our address at 1105 because our name was on the address. And I called and spoke with Mr. Harbison, and because we had just acquired, paid the taxes on it, and that we had no notification, we were advised that we could not do anything to the property because of the redemption rights. And therefore, I asked for a waiver. So, he told me that I didn't have to worry about it, it would be given, it would be assessed to the previous owners, which is FNA. So, my concern is for Pentecostal Temple, we don't want to be able, we don't want to be in a position that we would, the lien would be on us. And that's my representation here today is that we be free from this assessment.
Are you asking that your name just be removed from the lien?
No, I'm not, well...
Or that you not be responsible for the lien?
Well, as Pentecostal Temple, Church of God in Christ, if the FNP be assessed the lien...
And they are.
Right.
I mean, you realize the lien is actually assessed against the real property.
Right.
I mean, any names that are attached are because of interest that you had at one time, FNP had at one time, but the lien is actually against the property.
So...
And Madam President, if you wish, we could table this for seven days and I could get legal to look at it and make a determination.
Because I have, because I have questions, but I'm not sure exactly what type of questions to ask concerning that.
My district, yeah, that's what I want to do, table it.
Okay. So, what we'll do, sir, is that we'll table this particular item for today. Mr. Harbison, should he get in, should he be in contact with you and...
Yeah, I'll tell you, any paperwork that you've got...
Yes, sir.
...as far as ongoing issues in the property, if you could just provide that to me...
Okay.
...and I'll get that to our legal department.
All right.
And we'll, we'll let you know before next week what's going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other, if you'll come, give your name and address, please, and what property are you?
My name is Roberto Aragas Diaz. The property is 1423 Alabama Avenue. And I just want to say that I was trying to buy that land for tax sale, and I paid two years. And, but then, they tore down the house, and I lost the interest on that property. So, I didn't pay the following year of taxes because I didn't want the house, the property or the land anymore. But I guess it's not even my property yet because, because I was waiting, I didn't do any work on the property because I was waiting for the owner to redeem it or do something to it. And I was just keeping it clean. And, but then, they didn't tell me that it was condemned and that they were going to tear it down. So, I didn't know anything, so...
You were buying this property for tax, from the taxes, right?
Taxes, yeah.
Right. Mr. Harbison?
So, this year's taxes, I didn't pay it because I lost the interest.
Okay. Mr. Harbison?
What I would recommend is just what we get on the previous case.
Just table it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll get it. If they don't own the property though, they just getting the tax, paying the taxes...
Yeah.
...and they have three years of redemption, so they can't do anything to the property.
He can't, he can't sell it, but he's in the path on the title. He's paying the taxes, so...
His name wouldn't be down here if it wasn't on the tax.
I was waiting for the third year.
That's what I'm saying, he paid the taxes. He said he paid the taxes for two years.
I paid, I got the property on May, I think, when I paid the first year of taxes, and then the following, that same year was December when they paid the taxes, that's when I paid the second year. So, but before I paid the, I don't remember when they tore down the house, but it was like probably June or May or somewhere. So, before, not too long, when I first paid the taxes, it was already tore down.
Mr. Harbison, let Mr. Harbison.
Just for clarity, when someone purchases the tax certificate from the state, if it's just been taken over by the state, then what you're provided is a tax certificate that's got your name on it. You are actually registered as the owner, even though you don't have that tax deed, which is true until third through the fifth year, until that right of redemption has passed. Now, what we will do, and I've stated this multiple times here, is that even with just that first tax certificate, we will issue you a permit. And I always tell the folks, keep up with all of your receipts, make sure that you have documented all the needed repairs that you have made, so that when someone does come forward, if they do, to redeem the property, you'll at least be able to recover plus a percentage of everything that you've invested in that property. You have to realize, we actually have that property recorded as condemned, so anything you do to it, obviously, is going to be an improvement. And we will... And we will issue the permit, just for clarity. I know a lot of people call and say, "I can't touch it for three years." That's not necessarily true. Once you get a tax certificate and it's registered in your name, we will treat you as an owner and issue you whatever permits you need, just so you'll understand that. Any questions about that?
I'd always heard, Mr. Harbison, any money you spend on a house through a tax sale, they would have to reimburse you. If somebody comes back and gets that, they'd have to reimburse you.
It has to be documented, and there may be a circumstance where you have to prove to a judge that it was actually needed. But like I said, once this property is recorded as condemned, that's an easy threshold to accomplish, because anything you do is basically improving on that property.
I think in Alabama City, we had that one time, somebody bought a tax sale house, it was the first year, and they went and put a chain link fence around the whole yard, a five-foot fence around there. And the people that didn't pay the taxes, didn't, that owned the property to begin with, didn't want to come up with the money for the fence and to pay the people back and everything. So that person that got it through the tax sale was his anyway after that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Harbison.
No, but I do feel, Madam President, that's maybe clear as mud to a lot of people. So I'll try to clarify y'all. When a house goes into where the property tax hasn't been paid ultimately...
You can have a seat, sir. In fact, if you want to, after council meeting, if you want to talk with Mr. Harbison to, so you can get a clearer understanding.
Yeah, because...
Okay. Because Mr. Wilson, he probably still won't understand with your clarification, but go ahead. He needs to talk to Mr. Harbison, but go ahead to...
Yeah, I was just talking to the public in general, just to make sure y'all understand. So what happens is if a property goes, falls into tax default, you haven't paid your property taxes, and the state says, "Okay, we're taking it over," and a lot of people just walk away from it at that point. In most instances, it's because the house isn't even worth what the property taxes owed on it. So they just give it up, give it back to the state. Well, in Alabama, if you go and buy a property for the taxes owed on it, that original property owner's still got three years that they can come back and pay the taxes plus the interest and get the property back. So what usually happens is people, if they buy a property from a tax lien, they say, "I'm not putting a penny into this thing for at least three years because I don't want to put a bunch of money in it." And then the other guy come back and just pay the taxes on it, and now he gets a house that I renovated, but that's not an accurate excuse. And the reason not is because you can get that money back. Once you sign your name on that tax deed and you got the tax certificate, you're responsible for that house. You can't just let it sit there abandoned, waiting on the three years to pass before you do any improvement to it. The right way to do it is to go ahead and make the improvements and document it, so that if those people ever come back and say, "I want that property back," now they don't just have to pay the taxes on it, they've got to pay you back for all the improvements. Otherwise, we just have a whole bunch of properties sitting around here in a three-to-five-year waiting window for the rights of redemption to expire, and we've got to make sure that these condemned houses get addressed. So in this situation, the tax certificate holder, Mr. Diaz, is saying, "I didn't want to do any improvements to it because I was waiting on that right of redemption to file." The city says, "Now, you still got to maintain a house. You can't let a condemned house just sit there."
Was there something on? Well, the problem is that I could have started fixing the house, but I didn't know that it was condemned. And I had, because one time I didn't cut the grass, and they sent me a letter, and they sent me a letter to charge me for the demolition fee. But they never sent me a letter to tell me that it was condemned and that they were not tearing it down.
Well, just like I say, talk to Mr. Harbison afterward, would you please?
I was going to say, Madam, if you search the title for that property, we're required by the State of Alabama to report that notice at the probate office, I mentioned that with the previous case. And that way, if you do a true title search, you're not buying property that's condemned without your knowledge, because that's the whole purpose of reporting it. So if someone buys property without searching the title, then that could be a problem.
Possibly, possibly. Back to our agenda. We have item 12, we have item 13, and we have item 16.
Madam President, 13 and 14, no, 14 and 15, can we table them?
I'm going through the first one. What is the pleasure of the council for item 12, 13, and 16?
Move to the back, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Does in favor to adopt the resolutions for items number 12, number 13, and number 16? Let it be number 100. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt all three resolutions.
We have item 14, which is at 1423 Alabama Avenue, and we have item 15, which is at 1107 Hurst Street. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move the table for 30 days.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Does in favor to table items number 14 and 15 for a period of 30 days? Let it be number 100. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to table both resolutions for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1117 Hooks Lake Road from an R1, one-family resident district, to a B1 neighborhood business district. Nolan T. Holland requests the rezoning in order to operate a real estate office at his location, and his application states he intends to move a 16-by-40 prefabricated building onto the lot to be used for office space. One letter of opposition was received, and the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone speaking in favor? This ordinance was presented for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Our final public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located near the rear portion of 1045 and 1047 Tuscaloosa Avenue from a B2 general business district to a B3 central business district. The City of Gaston Planting Department requested the rezoning to correct an unintentional split zoning that occurred when the front portion of the property was rezoned to a B3 in 2011. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone want to speak in favor? This ordinance was presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. New business? None. Department, any department reports? Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor doesn't... Councilman, where are they?
Just a couple announcements about the Moderna vaccination. On Thursday, April 22nd, to be at the Way of the Cross, 101 North 24th Street, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that'll be the Moderna vaccination. And then it's one would be Tuesday at Calver Community Center from, I think he said 10, let me look at it first, let me find it so I can have it correct. 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Calver Community Center on Tuesday, April 27th. And walk up or drive up, first come, first served. You don't have to have an appointment. So please, ma'am, please, sir, let's have a good showing. Please come out and take it. Don't be afraid because they put the J&amp;J vaccine on hold. I've taken it, and I had the Moderna, and the second shot, it made me sick a little bit. About 25, 26 hours later, my wife and I both, we had like little body aches, little chill. She went to sleep for about four hours, woke up, she was fine. I went to sleep, took a nap for about four hours. When I woke up, I was better, but I wasn't 100% till the next morning. So, but when you have those symptoms, the doctors tell me that letting you know it's working. So that's good. So please, ma'am, please, sir, take it. We need more people here in Etowah County taking the vaccine. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything today.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am, just a reminder about the Gaston Etowah Patriots Association Golf Tournament. It'll be Monday, the 26th, kickoff at 8:00. So if you haven't given me your names or slack any, be sure and call me before then. That's it.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, ma'am, just want to recognize a tremendous member of our community that's been around a long, long time. He has stepped down from a couple of boards recently, and I think now's a good time to any to just give my public thanks to Mr. George White. George is a lifelong resident of Gaston, actually a lifelong resident of Turner Time Avenue, and more specifically, the lifelong resident of the same house on Turner Time Avenue. His family built the house over 100 years ago. He is an attorney. He's a black belt in karate at some point in his life, but more recently, he is responsible for the Turner Time Historic Committee. He drafted every single document necessary to put that program together. It's a document that was used by several other historical groups in the community and mimicked that. He also has served for years on the Forest Cemetery and countless boards for the city. He is probably most famous, known for those who live downtown, as our crime watch coordinator. George has a Lincoln Continental with a large spotlight mounted on the side of it and drives throughout our community all hours of the night, making sure that nobody's in your backyard or in your driveways or sometimes in your bedroom.
I don't believe I've said that.
And if he's not in the Lincoln, he's on his three-wheel bicycle for greater mobility into your driveway. And he's just been a pleasure. He's helped me as a resident of Turner Time, and he's helped me several times navigate that process for making improvements to historic homes. He hand delivers all notifications and letters to your door, face to face. He's just a cut from a different cloth, and he's from the greatest generation, and we don't have a lot of people like that left around here. So thank you, George, for everything you did. I also want to recognize the, y'all noticed I have a new hat on today? This is the hat of the 8-and-under Coach Pitch Gaston City Baseball League, Back Forty Brewers. So please support the 8-and-under Coach Pitch Back Forty Brewers. This is all part of my long-term plan to bring a minor league baseball team to Gaston, so you got to get with them when they're early. So please check out the Back Forty Brewers. Thank you, guys.
Councilman Bag.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Would like just to mention a few things. Want to mention speeding in my district. I've had a lot of calls recently about speeders. You know, it's spring, kids are out walking, families are out walking, and man, cars are just flying in our neighborhoods. So please be careful, and please, surely you're not that important, that you got to get somewhere 35 seconds quicker because you're going 65 in a 25-zone. I just don't, I don't think anybody's that important. There's so many people out enjoying good weather, so please slow down, please think, and please don't speed in our neighborhoods. That's probably a blanket statement for all of Gaston, but just, I've had a few calls about that lately, some close calls, and so please slow down. Would like to, Councilman Reed brought up the Patriots Association, a longtime worker in that program, Rick Vaughn, who's a friend of mine. I reached out to Rick, actually, my wife reached out to Rick looking for a flag, an American flag, for a neighbor that has a flag, but it was just all torn to shreds. And so Rick got us two flags, and one of those flags is going to now go to Striplin Elementary School, because their flag is in need of replacement. So Rick's always helping people, never wants any recognition. I've probably just got myself in trouble with Rick for saying his name, so if y'all don't see me again, you'll know what happened. But thank you, Rick, I appreciate that. Also want to say, she's not in here, but say thank you to Lisa Ross, our city finance director. We've received a audit, which, you know, the city has audited, gosh, I can hardly pick it up, but it's a very good audit, came back very clean. It's going to be good reading material for the next few days, and, but just want to thank her for all the work that she does. What an arduous task, $52 million or so that she's responsible for that comes in and out of our city, and she just does a good job. If you were here for the pre-council meeting, you may have heard a conversation about the American Rescue Plan. We have not received, nobody has received, the actual rules and for how that can be spent. It's supposed to come in the middle of May. We're all waiting with bated breath to get those guidelines from the federal government, but there is planning going on. I mean, we're all probably individually thinking about things to do and how that could be best used in our community. So a lot of effort goes into that, a lot of meticulous record-keeping will have to be done, so there's a lot of work to do. There'll be public meetings, and everybody will be aware of thoughts and processes on that. So just want to mention that, because I know that's on the news and everybody's seeing that, and I'm sure everybody, there's 19,000 cities in our country that are going to receive this, these trillions of dollars. So not sure how we're all going to pay that back one day, but at my age, I don't know if I'll have to deal with that. I guess my children and my grandchildren might have to wrestle with that one. And on a personal note, just want to take personal privilege, just a note of congratulations to my daughter, Kirkland Back, recently passed the Alabama Bar Exam.
Great.
So she is now an attorney at law, so we're very proud of her and for her efforts there, and just excited for her. And she's also expecting her first child, so it's kind of a double happy time for our family. So we're very excited for her and for her husband, Morgan Cunningham. So just wanted to give them a shout out. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman, will you?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
All right, I have a statement here. Our attorney is not here. His son is having surgery, and so this is, if I'm throwing him under the bus, I am, but I was given the privilege of reading this statement. You've seen this statement in the papers, on the news feed, but I'm going to read the statement. It says, "Last week, the city released a statement concerning stolen IDA documents and the investigation. It was posted online, summarized in the media articles, but we want to read the response in full and emphasize that the city is being transparent and following the law on this issue. The mayor, in his statement during last Tuesday's council meeting, did not accuse Kristi Knowles of having stolen documents from the IDA. It would have been wrong, and had he done so, because there's no available evidence that she did. Instead, the question posed by the mayor was, how did she come in possession of the stolen documents? Ms. Knowles' response is that she received the stolen documents from a whistleblower. The whistleblower, according to Ms. Knowles, is an anonymous individual who identity is unknown to her. According to her, this anonymous individual may work for the city or possibly the IDA. She does not know. Yet in her statement, Ms. Knowles contends the anonymous person had appropriate access to this information and was concerned about the rendering plan. If this person was truly unknown to Ms. Knowles, how would she know how the documents were obtained? The truth is that the totality of the documents in question exists on the IDA computer, to which no one else had appropriate assets. The mayor and the city officials unevocably denied any suggestion of influence over the police department's investigation into the stolen documents. The truth is, the IDA, not the city, filed a police report with the Gaston Police Department. The filing of the report is what initiated a criminal investigation. No one within the police department has ever discussed with the mayor or any of the city officials any matter concerning its investigation. Likewise, neither the mayor nor no other city official have involved themselves with the investigation. Instead, the IDA staff has discussed with the mayor the details concerning the stolen documents. For example, an IDA staff member reported that while he was working at the IDA office during the Thanksgiving holidays, he observed someone remotely controlling the activities on his computer. Within days, we learned that documents contained only on the IDA computer were now circulating on Mrs. Knowles' opposition website. According to... According to Ms. Knowles' press release, we are now led to believe that someone remotely accessed the IDA system on one, on at least one occasion. In her press release, Ms. Knowles claimed to have received the stolen documents a few days before Thanksgiving, not afterwards. If true, the police detectives are likely aware that such an evidence occurred, but the city was obviously not aware that multiple criminal acts may have possibly occurred. Ms. Knowles' accusation that the Gaston Police Department is conducting an unwarranted investigation into stolen documents simply because the mayor does not like her opposition to the proposed rendering plant is bizarre, blatantly untrue, and defamation statements. Moreover, she exhibits a profound misunderstanding about the standards by which the Gaston Police Department conducts its criminal investigation. The detectives report to the prosecutor, not the mayor. Therefore, the mayor would have no knowledge over what documents, if any, Ms. Knowles allegedly turned over to the police department. The mayor is deeply concerned over the publication of the stolen documents on Ms. Knowles' website. First, this is an economic development project brought to the Gaston by the state of Alabama. As such, it is subject to the protection of nondisclosure, which expressly exempts operational and confidential and proprietary documents from public dissemination. Specifically, Alabama Code, Section 4129-3B, states that all information concerning a proposed project seeking an economic development incentive, which is provided to any state or local government, agency, department, or any other entity seeking an economic development incentive, shall be confidential. Second, the proposed pilgrim facility is subject to Food and Drug Administration Regulation under the Public Health Security and the Bureau of Terrorists Preparedness and Response Act of 2002. Elements of the Food Defense Program include, most importantly, prohibit against the release of documents directly related to the layout and design of the site. The city remains committed to give this industry, as well as any and all future industries, a fair opportunity for consideration. Unfortunately, Ms. Knowles' allegations over lack of transparency are fueled by the reality that the city is following both state and federal laws that mandate confidentiality. But to be clear, the mayor has not threatened or attempted to intimidate Ms. Knowles despite her bizarre and unfound claim. To the contrary, that's the statement in its entirety that the attorney released to the media. I call for a motion to adjourn.